Good evening. I'm going to call to order the Wilmington School Committee meeting of Wednesday, November 14th. If you could please all join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next, we have a rousing rendition of the Star Spangled...
Yes. Where do we go? Do you want us to...
Come where we can see you. Maybe you can come right here.
Okay.
You guys want to come right around? We have some special guests from the Wilmington Middle School, and these are the Wilmington's.
Thank you so much for having us perform for you. We're the Wilmington's. My name is Samantha Printeville. I am the director of the group. We'll be performing two selections. The first one is the Star Spangled Banner, so I do ask if you could stand. And then afterwards, we'll be doing Jingle Bells.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight All the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that Star Spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Do you mind if I use this microphone? We have a beatboxer in our group, and so you'll be able to hear him better. Thanks. All right. Just going to move this here. As close as I can get it. All right.
Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh Over the fields we go, laughing all the way Bells on bobtails ring, mink and serpents cry What fun it is to ride and sing our sleighing song, ding-dang, ding-ding, ding-ding. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh Over the fields we go, laughing all the way Bells on bobtails ring, mink and serpents cry What fun it is to ride and sing our sleighing song, ding-dang, ding-ding, ding-ding. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh!
Thank you so much for having us. We always love coming here, and I just broke your microphone stand, so... That's charming. All right. Wilmington, your feet up. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Always love having the kids here with us, although I'm a little surprised that we're almost Jingle Bells time, right?
The concert is in two and a half weeks. You're telling me.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you again.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Our first item on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda, and the first item listed is the approval of our minutes from our October 24th regular session meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes, please? Mr. Ragsdale, thank you, seconded by Mrs. Bryson. All those in favor? That looks like unanimous to me, Tristan. Thank you very much. All righty. We've been asked to consider the approval of a grant from the Wilmington Rotary. This is for physical activity bags for grade-one students at the Woburn Street and the Shawshene Elementary Schools in the amount of up to $6,000. And I think we have Mrs. Stinson here in the audience. If you'd like to come down and share a few ideas with us about what this grant might be used for.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I was fortunate to be contacted by the Wilmington Rotary to create and work with them to put together a wellness grant. And they were looking for a grant that would sort of seek out into the community, into the families of the Wilmington Public Schools. So I had always had the idea of putting together physical activity bags, and so I took the opportunity and sort of put that proposal together. So essentially, what it will be is that for both the Woburn Street School and the Shawshene Elementary School, we will create up to 35 bags, which will include a piece of physical activity equipment. It might have an activity game card. It's going to include not this, but a journal where they can journal write about it. The plan is to also include some different books that can be into the bag as well. So there'll be the physical activity equipment, the journal, a book. Also considering putting in some nutrition information in the bag. There'll be a coloring book for each child that will come home with the bag from Kids in Motion. So looking to just really see if I can sort of bring a fun activity into the home for the children and sort of expand upon both the physical education curriculum as well as the health education curriculum in the district at the elementary level. So that's my goal. And originally, when I had started the process of writing the grant and working with the Rotary, they...it was $3,000 they were looking at, and then I was fortunate, I guess, they were able to have the funds matched. So we were able to then not only do it in one building, we can now do it at both Shawshene and Woburn Street. So it would be at just the first grade levels, and it will work similar to a library book on a weekly basis, so I want the bag to actually be home with the children and the family for a week, and then come back into the school, and then we'll have to sort of check it through and make sure it's ready to go back out with the next student. And just keep the process moving along with all seven classrooms at the Woburn Street and then the six classrooms at the Shawshene School. So that's essentially the action plan at this point. And we'll be going through like the purchasing process for the equipment for the bags, also trying to...and then get the bags. And my goal is to have a cinch bag so that it can just kind of...and the equipment and everything will be kind of safely in there, and on it goes. So that's the intent. Stay tuned, because it'll be a first time for me, so we'll see. I think it's...I'm excited. I'm really excited. The children, I haven't shared anything yet because I still have so much process to do to get them to put together, and then to introduce them, and send a letter home to the families, sort of sharing out the whole process. So my plan is by the first of the year to get that ongoing.
Great. Thank you. Does any of the committee members have any questions or comments? All right. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve. Mrs. Bryson, seconded by Mr. Bjork. All those in favor? That looks like unanimous. Thank you very much for this idea.
Thank you.
And also, thank you to the Wilmington Rotary for offering up the funds to pay for it. That's fabulous.
Absolutely. 100%. I truly appreciate that. And in the spring, what I'll do is I'll come back and sort of share some of the events and activities that I hope to sort of receive back from the families and the children as they sort of go through the whole activity of it. So thank you all very much.
That would be great. Thank you very much for the time.
And I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Under our consent agenda items, the next item up is they are looking for approval of the Amazon Robotics donation for 15 Windows laptops to the Wilmington High School Science Department and the robotics team with an approximate value of $6,750. And I believe we have some members of the high school robotics team that might want to talk a little bit about what they've been doing, and I think they have an example for us. Excellent. Would you like to introduce yourselves quickly and maybe talk a little bit about what you've been doing as part of the robotics club?
Yeah, so my name's Ethan Karneski. I'm a...
Andy, if you can set up the robot, and then Ethan can...
Sorry, set up. So my name's Ethan Karneski. I'm a high school senior here. I joined robotics because I actually do robotics over at Redding High School on their FRC team. So when I heard that we were getting a grant for, I believe it was $10,000 to start...
$100,000.
$100,000 to start an FTC team here, I was very excited, because when I first heard about robotics, I wanted to do it here, and then we didn't have one, so I went to Redding, and now I'm doing both, and I love robotics, so that's the main reason I joined.
That's great. Thank you.
Who's next? Leah?
I was really excited to learn...
Oh, hi. Yeah, my name's Leah Nelson. I am a junior at Wilmington High School, and I am so happy that we've been like fortunate enough to have this opportunity to, you know, be on a team like for robotics. I don't know. It's really exciting. I really like the subject, and I'm happy to be on the team and be a lead, and yeah, just design a robot. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Andy. Robotics is pretty cool. It's something that I'm actually very interested, just the concept of programming. I'm the software lead for robotics. And basically what that is, I'm just going to be helping other people learn how to program it, and that's really cool. I'm very passionate about the group. I think we have a lot of people that are also really passionate about it. I'm going to be...I have written an article or an article for robotics team, and it's going to be on the Wilmington News WordPress website, so check that out, too.
Thank you.
I'm Jill Cornell. I'm in 10th grade. I'm the marketing and blogging lead for the robotics team. I joined because I wanted to learn more about coding and like the mechanics of robotics and everything. I've learned a lot about like communicating with my peers in the robotics team. So as a PR lead, I have an Instagram and a Twitter. You can follow them here. But I basically on those tell everybody what's going on outside of robotics club and inside of robotics club. Yeah. I've learned a lot of that, that stuff.
Thank you. Am I correct in understanding that the robotics club was recently hosted at Amazon for a day?
Yes, so we'll talk about that.
Great.
My name is Julie Kim. I'm the Science C T L.
And I'm Marlene King. I'm the physics teacher.
And we're co-advisors to the robotics club. And so Marlene actually has a connection with Mr. Chad Wright, who invited us to Amazon Robotics, so...
So I have been lucky enough to have both of his daughters in my classroom, so his older daughters are already off at college, and his younger daughter is in my class right now, and he heard that we were starting up the robotics team, and Amazon likes to repurpose things and reach out to the community. And when he heard that we were starting up a team here, he reached out to us and invited us to come and view the facility, and then was gracious enough to also offer to allow us to have a field trip there. So this past Friday, the entire robotics team, we took 22 students on a field trip there, and I think they all had a really good time, and they enjoyed it. So he gave us a nice, dynamic presentation, so they got to see some robots in action. But as part of his support of the robotics team and science in general, he wanted to also donate some laptops to us.
That's great. Thank you. Do we get a demonstration?
Yes.
Then wait.
So this is the basic pushbot, so we still have a lot more building that needs to be done, because we actually are playing a game called Rover Ruckus. So it's a simulation of what happens when we land robots on the moon and we need to harvest minerals. So we have a sphere and a cube that we have to actually then build attachments to that that will then sort them, you know, then collect them, right? And then this machine has to then, we have to build a mechanism that will connect and then unengage from the actual landing site, and then re-engage. And then we partner up with other teams all over pretty much the state and other states around here to compete. So our competition is in January, so starting this week, we actually went to double sessions. We meet on Fridays. We start around 2:00. Some kids actually try to run out of their classes before 2:05, so they can get to Ms. King's room early. And then we probably meet until 5:30, sometimes 6:00. We're trying to kick the kids out. Now we're going to double sessions, so since we have parent-teacher conferences Thursday night, we said, all right, we'll be here. You guys can come and start building. And so we have actually three sets like that, and then we'll have three teams, and then we'll try to figure out which team can build the best robot, and then do the best or earn the most amount of points in the game simulation, and then that robot will then compete in January under our team number.
That's pretty cool. That's really great. Committee members have any questions for the kids? Mrs. Burns?
I just have to say, my...I'm decades older, so robotics wasn't something that I was totally familiar with, and my only knowledge of robotics was those robotics arenas where they come out chopping each other off.
The battle bots, yes.
The battle bots.
We could do that, too, maybe, but that's not the goal. We don't actually do...
I wouldn't need a resource officer in a high school.
Yes.
But that's...it's just absolutely amazing, just to listen to you all talk and the passion that you evoke about robotics. I just...I know I could learn so much from you, so I...the most times that you can come before us with your creations, I think the happier and the more knowledge I can learn about that field.
Thank you. Well, we also, and I think they were kind of nervous and shy, we actually are also mentoring the robotics team at the middle school. So we have over 50 kids signed up at the middle school. We've already...Ethan, Jill, and another team lead went down to the middle school and kind of explained our structure. It's all student-led, so many times, you know, Marlene and I are sitting back, and we're dealing with all the paperwork, like, we need this part. This is the wrong phone case. We're like, all right, I'll fix that, you know, dealing with all the logistics. And then Ethan, and then we have other team leads will go around and check in with the groups, making sure, you know, even our T-shirt was designed by a student, so that was the creative section. And they just run themselves. So we have about 59 students at the high school, about 50, I think, one or two at the middle school, so over 100 students from grade 6 to 12 that are actually interested in this. So it's pretty amazing. We didn't realize that the interest level would be this high and this fast.
That's great.
So it's awesome.
That's awesome. Mr. Ragsdale and then Mr. Talbot.
I was wondering how the recent grant that we received is directly supporting this work.
Of course, yes. That was the only reason we were able...each robot costs about $1,000, so that in itself, the basic bot costs about $800 to $1,000 to build. And then in addition to that, we have five bots, and then we have all the supporting stuff, so we had to get the computers. So if it wasn't for the grant, we wouldn't have been able to actually start the robotics team.
Mr. Talbot?
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. I remember that grant coming through and how much it took of your time to do that and, you know, how you keep it going. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. It's our...well, it's...how can you not, right? When you have 50-plus kids running to your room so that the other kids can't even leave, like, it's really pretty amazing, and they just want to stay and play and build and do science, and so, you know, that's why we teach, right?
That's great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Bjork, I see you out of the corner of my...
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it's fantastic. There's so much interest. That's very impressive. I would just say, if movies have taught us anything, I urge you to be very careful with AI. Thank you, guys, very much.
I appreciate now hearing the cost. I appreciate now why you said no battle bots, right?
No.
Well, this is very strict on the rules of what you are and aren't allowed to do in terms of running into other robots.
Makes sense.
Very strict.
That's great. Thank you very much for your presentation. With that, I will ask for a motion to approve this very generous donation from Amazon. Mrs. Burns, thank you, seconded. Mr. Talbot, thank you, all those in favor? That looks like unanimous. We very much appreciate your presentation and also the donation. I had no idea it was that expensive.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Be careful.
I'm going to try to group these as much as possible. We have G407, R211, 212, 213, 214, L23, 24, 25, 26, FS11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and the payroll warrant for weekending November 7th. Can I have a motion to approve those? Mr. Talbot, thank you, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All those in favor? That looks like unanimous to me, Tristan. Thank you. Next up, we have warrant CB04. Can I have a motion to approve? Mrs. Bryson, thank you, seconded. Mr. Ragsdale, thank you. All those in favor of CB04? Looks like I've got five. Thank you, with two abstentions, Mrs. Burns and Mr. Bjork. And finally, warrants sped 10 and sped 11. Can I have a motion to approve those, please? Mrs. Bryson, thank you, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. Thank you, all those in favor? Looks like we've got four. Thank you, with three abstentions, Mrs. Newhouse, Mrs. Burns, and Mr. Bjork. Thank you very much. And that gets us through our consent agenda. Next up, we're going to hear from yet another Wilmington High School student, Ali Jordan, for our student representative report.
Hi. So I just wanted to talk about a few things that are coming up next week, with it being Spirit Week and close to Thanksgiving. So next week during W2, we'll have an advisory period where we're going to be focusing on gratitude with the holiday coming up. And next week is Spirit Week. Students really go all out and show their school pride. Wednesday, there will be a pep rally, and this coming Friday and Saturday is the school play, She Kills Monsters. The students have been working really hard on this play since the beginning of the school year, and I'm sure it's going to be great. It's this Friday at 7:00 and Saturday at 2:00 and at 7:00. Again, this week is for DECA, the Global Entrepreneurship Week. I've seen a lot of students working really hard to promote DECA and get their work done for it, and I just wanted to recognize them, their being extremely innovative and involved and challenging themselves today. One student was working on products with paperclips, and I just...I was surprised that it was a challenge, and anyways. Last weekend, the boys' cross-country team got second at the Division Four All-State Meet, and they're moving on to All States. Two students who I wanted to recognize were Ben Packer and Greg Adamek. They're both amazing students, and they're working really hard in school and in their sport. After Thanksgiving break, winter sports will be starting again, and everyone is excited for the new seasons. In terms of WHS, the school newspaper this week, advised by Mr. Randall and Mr. Lewis, the students are publishing articles about different clubs this week, such as DECA Robotics, Model UN, and senior Bruce Leese is writing about sports. Andy, I think, published or is publishing an article about the robotics and the grant that they got, so...
That's great. Thank you very much for your report. On the play this weekend, are tickets available at the door, or do they need to be purchased?
I'm sure they're...I'm most positive they're available at the door, and they're also available online. I don't have the website, but I've seen it advertised, so...
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your report. Thank you. And always, for our high school students, if they'd like to stay for the whole meeting, they're certainly welcome to, but if you have homework, you're also welcome to go home and start that as well. You're welcome. Thank you, as always. That's great. Thank you very much.
I'm also too curious what the sizes are. I can like try to bring it up to you like soon.
Excellent. Thank you. Dr. Brand, would you like to update us with your superintendent's report, please?
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. There are two items to bring to your attention of the superintendent's report this evening. In your packet, there is an update, a fall update regarding the global child classes. Another example, as I've come to learn and continue to learn, of the widespread community involvement and partnerships that help provide some degree of programming or access to services and experiences for the young people in Wilmington, and this is yet another one. The report, as you can see, is included herein, provides an update on Spanish classes that are being offered at the elementary level here in Wilmington. The report includes, as you can see, a highlight of the number of students involved, and also highlights the growth that continues, it would seem, around some of the programming, in particular at Woburn Street. And attached to that report is just a snapshot of the grade levels being served, the days offered, and the respective times for the...so my understanding is this is somewhat of an annual report and update, and so I include it here for your information this evening. In addition to that, also included in the packet, a very different item, but one nevertheless to bring attention to, is the memorandum of understanding between the Wilmington Public Schools and the Wilmington Police Department. I'm not exactly sure if this is an item that has in the past come before the school committee, but nevertheless, I think it's important that it does. Just if I could, a couple of moments to highlight some of the key details and why this might be situated here. This is a new model agreement that is in place in the state, and it was released this past September, 2018, of course, jointly by three entities: Attorney General Maura Healy, Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, as well as the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Within the document, if you've had a chance to take a look at it, you'll see a couple of particular points that it highlights. One around the governance of the school resource officer, or as we often refer to them in the schools, the SROs. And in connection with...this model document really emerged from some changes within the criminal justice law back last year in April, in the spring. And so districts across the Commonwealth have been pursuing changes and revisions to these respective documents. Ultimately, this law is in place to ensure a couple of things. First, that school resource officers, again, SROs, do not use police powers to take the place of appointed school disciplinarians, school administrators, or school-based mental health providers. As the committee...I think it's worthy to note, this particular quote, the commissioner of the Department of Ed has stated, and certainly I couldn't agree more. "SROs hold a unique position in a school setting and carry unique responsibilities, and this memorandum of understanding helps define how the SRO can improve school safety, while recognizing that many school discipline issues do not require the involvement of law enforcement." There's a piece in here, as you'll see, around the SRO selection process, around the while recognizing that many school discipline issues do not require the involvement of law enforcement." There's a piece in here, as you'll see, around the SRO selection process, around the role of SRO and school administrators in responding to student incidents, as well as information sharing, as it relates to matters that SROs might be involved in, and also, finally, SRO training. A couple of other pieces just to note on this item, school administrators do still have the flexibility for how we utilize them here in the district, and this would hold true, or should hold true theoretically, in all school districts. It's important to note, I think, for our community, that school resource officers do work ultimately, of course, for the police department, but they also serve as a liaison with the schools, and they do work at the pleasure of the principals. We do, as a district, also have access, in case you're wondering, a question or two did emerge on this matter, or area of interest. We do have additional mental health resources, as I've come to learn here in the district, and I think we're very fortunate to have these partnerships. One is the Wilmington Police Department's Health and Recovery Coordinator, as well as a, an agency referred to as advocates. And we rely upon assistance from time to time from both of those entities. And again, finally, this MOU will be posted on the school website, if not later this week, certainly early next. So I'm happy to take any questions that you might have on either of those two items this evening.
Mrs. Burns?
I have to say, I, and we'll talk about this a little more in detail at the, towards the end of the meeting, but I guess I hit the nail on the head with some of the workshops I undertook last week at MASCE Conference. I did take one that spoke, Cambridge Deputy, Deputy Chief, I believe, along with his commanding sergeant, was discussing the alliance they have in the Cambridge Public Schools with the SROs, a mental health piece through Cambridge Health Alliance, along with the ministries of the public schools, and to try to target at-risk students, from getting them into the appropriate mental health resource, as opposed to them finding their way through the juvenile court system, which doesn't serve any kind of purpose. And they're collecting data. It was grant-funded, but it's been a great partnership for ensuring that students remain in school and get the necessary supports, not only within the school environment, but in their own communities and families. And I was so happy to see this in the packet when I got home. I think it's a wonderful, a wonderful aspect, so there's a clear understanding as to how we can utilize the officers within our district.
Any other comments or questions? No?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna make note, on page five of the materials we were given, I noticed that the listing of officers that are assigned to our schools, there's one that's listed as TBD, but I'm assuming that's because the document was written before that person was announced.
Correct, right. This was, it took some time for, this document was actually signed and submitted for approval back in the summer, if I remember correctly. And so, it did take some time to get this document back. So I, so we just recently received it, and you're correct, and this was done. So, we'll modify that as necessary. And if I may, just one final piece outside of the inclusion of this. I've said this certainly in a number of different places, I'm not sure here, within the confines of this meeting, but one of the, one of the many strong suits that I think that the district has in place in the community is the strong partnerships that we do enjoy with the police. And outside of this agreement, or any such agreement, in the short time that I've been here, it's been with tremendous pleasure to be able to see the strength of those partnerships in action between the police and between fire and other public services in town. I know often, I have experienced, in some settings, towns will speak of those, but sometimes it's not easy to see those partnerships. And again, in the short time here, it's been abundantly clear that these partnerships are strong and in place, and so, as a school committee in the community, you should be very proud of the foundation that's here in place between the police, then the fire, and the schools.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, looks like, moving on to old business, I'm not aware of any old business that we need to finish up with this evening, so we can move on to agenda items for new business. The first item being the fiscal year 18 end-of-year financial report. Mr. Regirao?
Thank you. As I do every year, all school districts have to prepare an end-of-the-year financial report for the Department of Elementary and Secondary and Education. So in front of you, I just gave you a copy of the report that was filed on October 27th. Essentially shows every dollar that comes into the district and every dollar that goes out of the district, so it's an accounting of all funds coming in and going out. It's a pretty big report, a lot of information. It includes both spending from the school committee, spending the town does, any grant in revolving fund revenue and expenditures. So all the money is identified in that report.
Any comments or questions from committee members? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Regirao. Next item up is, we're gonna hear from Dr. Regan on the 2018 MCAS Accountability and Achievements.
First of all... Oh, it does, okay. You should have had at your place page 35. That's an updated version from the original report that I provided for you, so the bottom table of that original report was incorrect. So, the Grade 10 Achievement District Comparisons in Math, Wilmington's actually got a higher score than I originally reported, so if you just replace that in your, in your report. Hit something now? Sorry. So there's a lot of information here, so I'm gonna go through it quickly. I mean, we could spend hours upon hours looking at this data. I tried, I tried to put it in a simpler format for the purpose of this meeting. I should tell you that, in the executive summary, much of the language in the first section, that talks about the accountability system, comes directly from the Department of Education's documents and website and so forth. The tables that were created, and many of them are recreated from the department as well. And I know that the committee had a presentation from Mr. Gallagher in the spring, I believe, or late winter last year, about the new accountability system, but there are new members, so I thought we could go through a couple of slides, but I apparently broke the computer. Perfect timing for that. You don't have copies of the PowerPoint, right? But you just have that, you know? Okay. Do you want me to go without?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Let's see what comes out of this black screen here.
Tell some jokes. Work the room.
So, I'll start talking anyway. So, the new accountability system went into effect this year. There are some, just a few highlights that were in your executive summary. There's new, there are new indicators that are used to measure school performance, including a special indicator for language acquisition for EL students, a high school completion indicator, indicators around attendance and chronic, specifically chronic absenteeism. And schools are also given credit for the percentage of students finishing advanced coursework. So, these are just some of the new indicators that were added. The focus now is, instead of using language of closing achievement gaps, they're looking at raising the achievement floor, and the focus is really on the bottom 20% of performers in the district and the school. So, the state is approaching it now, saying we're gonna identify who these bottom lowest-performing students are, and give you the task of helping those students improve. I'm sorry, thank you. So that's a key element to the new system. And instead of having simply levels one through five for schools and districts, they now have more descriptive language to categorize a school or a district within the, within the system. So the indicators, as you can see here, there, this is the structure for non-high schools. This is any school that services students outside of grades nine through 12. These indicators include growth and achievement, which we've always had, progress for EL students, which Wilmington will not have any data on that, because our population is too small, and chronic absenteeism. This is how those indicators are weighted. When you see the table that's coming up, you can, you can kind of put this in place, but Wilmington will be in the no EL column. And the weighting between achievement and student growth is a three to one. So I tried to do a little visual to show what that means, but, you know, 67.5% versus 22.5%, that's your three to one ratio in terms of how they're weighting achievement and student growth at the non-high school level. At the high school, it gets a little bit more complex, because there are more indicators. So you can see, achievement and growth is still there, but now you have this high school completion category, and they actually include that with achievement when you're thinking about the three to one ratio. So the state considers, and it makes logical sense, that high school completion and all the data that goes with that, graduation rate, extended engagement time, annual dropout rate, that all connects with achievement. The extended engagement rate is our work with students who have passed their graduation date without earning a diploma. Are we keeping them in school? Are we finding other avenues for them to finish, and schools get credit or get lower scores if they don't engage students beyond the graduation date? And so, the three to one ratio gets a little more complex, but you look at the high school completion and the achievement together, that gives you the three to the one, which is student growth. They use a normative and criterion-based calculations. The normative is essentially comparing your school, your district, against like schools and districts across the state. So, you get an achievement percentile. If it's 99, that means that that school is performing better than 99% of the schools like it across the Commonwealth. The accountability percentage, that one through 99, is at the school level only, not the district, and it's calculated using the all-students category. They don't use any subgroups to calculate that. And the criterion referenced is basically comparing how you're doing against your targets. The bottom bullet, if you could disregard, students must be enrolled, that doesn't belong there. So that has to do with the lowest-performing cohort. I don't know why I put that on there. That was my mistake, so that has nothing to do with the criterion reference piece, so. 2018 targets, they were set for one year using last year's data. I put this in quotes, because this is the language right from DESI, that they said conservative yet reasonable targets for 2018. I've not heard any complaints about the targets that were set at all, so they seem to be conservative yet reasonable. They do plan, as they completely roll out next-generation MCAS over the next year, and so, to have long-term targets back. Because the test was changing, they didn't have the ability to do that, so they were setting short-term targets. And the point system on the bottom gets explained a little more on this slide, and you'll see that in our, in our charts in the executive summary. Actual earned and possible points are reported. They're combined, they're weighted, using that table that I showed you earlier, and they're calculated into a percentage of possible points. This is done for the all-students category and that lowest-performing students category. Those two percentages are averaged, and that gives you your criterion reference target percentage. And the goal for a school is to reach 75% or higher, which indicates that you're meeting your targets. This is the new system that replaces the one-through-five system that we used to use. So you basically have two large buckets when you're looking at schools being categorized. You're either a school that doesn't require assistance or intervention, or you're a school that does require assistance or intervention. And the state expects 85% of schools to fall in that first category and 15 in the second. Schools of recognition are really the top tier of schools, and, you know, most of our schools fall in Wilmington in the meeting targets and partially meeting targets category. We have no schools that are in the requiring assistance or intervention. A little simpler version of that is used for districts. You see that the recognition piece is not there. They don't identify districts of recognition, they identify schools of recognition. But again, two big buckets, without required or required assistance, so it's those two areas. Wilmington falls within the partially meeting targets, which means that we have a target percentage within the 0 to 74 range. So the district accountability data, this is for grades three through eight. There's a lot of numbers up there, so I thought we would just look at some that are perhaps the most notable. In achievement, and this is, again, this is for all students, on the left and on the right, you see the lowest performing in grades three through eight. This is not including high school. We had no change in achievement in ELA and Science. That's what the one indicates. That's no change. And we had an improvement, but below target in math. The two kind of got hidden there when the circles went up. But a two means that you did make some progress, but you're still below your target. We met our targets in growth in math, and for the lowest-performing students, we exceeded our achievement levels in math, and we met our growth level in math. So, you know, that's promising to see for our lowest-performing students in terms of their math achievement and their math growth. In general, Wilmington tended to do better on the math side of the house than on the ELA side. Same idea for high school. This takes two pages, though, because there are additional indicators. In the all-student group, we had, we met or exceeded our targets for ELA Science Achievement, ELA Math for growth, our graduation rate, our extended engagement, and our dropout rate. So that's all good news at the high school level. And the lowest-performing students, we declined in terms of our math achievement, and there was no change with respect to ELA growth. And they don't calculate, hey, the high school completion for the lowest-performing subgroup. They do that just for all students only. And these are the remaining indicators for high school. Chronic absenteeism on, for all students was, was one, which meant there was no change. The advanced coursework completion improved below target. And the same for chronic absenteeism improved below target for our bottom 20%. These next couple of slides talk about students with disabilities, and at the district level, I'm able to report out the subgroup of students with disabilities. I can't do that at school levels for all schools, because the population is smaller in most of our elementary schools. So when I transition to the schools, we'll be talking about a high-needs group, which I'll explain. It includes students with disabilities, but at the district level, that's the only place that we, we show data for that population individually, so. We had no change with respect to achievement in math and science. On this chart, on the left, students with disabilities grades three through eight, and on the right, students with disabilities at the high school level. And we exceeded targets for achievement at the high school level in math, ELA, and Science. So, students with disabilities performed quite well at the high school level. We also exceeded with our students with disabilities for the four-year graduation rate and the annual dropout rate. That extended engagement rate is obviously something that the high school administration's always looking at. How do we re-engage students that reached their graduation date without a diploma? How do we keep them in school or get them back to schools so that they can earn that diploma in year five plus? So that zero is something that we definitely can look to improve. In terms of the remaining indicators for students with disability, chronic absenteeism declined, and that's not a good thing. We, our numbers worked against us there for students with disabilities at the three through eight level. We had some improvement, but below target at the high school level for that category. It's particularly exciting to see the advanced coursework piece for students with disability at the high school. We exceeded targets on that, so it's nice to see that the state is recognizing that we're engaging students with disability in rigorous courses. And those include AP courses, they can include international baccalaureate, which we don't have in Wilmington, dual enrollment courses with local colleges, and then there are other rigorous courses in math and science that they count. And that's something high schools will continue to look at, to make sure that we're getting credit for all of those courses that would fall under that category. So next, I'll fly through some school-based data. This is by grade, and each grade will have a slide which will include all students, and then we'll have a slide that'll include the high-needs population, which I'll talk about in just a moment. So this is grade three, and we can see a combined exceeding and meeting expectations. So this is grade three, and we can see a combined exceeding and meeting expectations. Those are the two categories you aim for, and then the other two categories were separated out. The orange represents the Shawshine, the yellow represents Woburn Street, and the green represents the state average. So you can see here for ELA, we did better than the state average in terms of exceeding and meeting expectations in both Shawshine and Woburn Street. It's nice to see that we had zero students at the Woburn Street that were not meeting expectations. So that's, that's quite impressive for ELA. On the math side of the house, we also higher than the state in terms of exceeding and meeting expectations categories. And in the other two categories, you want to see our bars lower than the state's, obviously. And so we, we fared pretty well when you look at the partially meeting, and, and we fared well when looking at not meeting expectations. So this is our high needs population, which includes students on IEPs. It includes students that are EL students or former EL students, and also students that are classified as economically disadvantaged. So they're all in this one category together. There's obviously a lot of overlap there, but that's, those are the students that are included when we see high needs, and you'll see those at each grade level. So the performance is a little bit different here, but again, what, what I'm looking for, any irregularities, where do we stick out in terms of being, you know, very far away from the state performance? Again, even with our high need students, zero students not meeting expectations in that category at the Woburn Street School, which is a positive. We do want to see at Woburn Street fewer students in that partially meeting, see them move over to meeting expectations or perhaps exceeding expectations. So when I talk about what we've done at the day-to-days, that's where you get into the student data, individual student data, and you're looking at who those kids are that represent that very tall yellow bar under reading, and where are they now? They're no longer at Woburn Street, so how are they performing at the north? And you know, what can we do to intervene so that when their grade four scores come out, there's improvement? For grade four, this is the all students category. The north performed well above the state in the exceeding and meeting categories at seventy-six percent versus the state's fifty-three. The west fell below the state average there, forty-eight to fifty-three. And on math, north and west both performed considerably higher than the state, at seventy and sixty-nine percent respectively, and the state coming in at forty-eight percent. So what you see on the math chart there is, that's the visual that we're looking for. This is the grade four high needs. Again, north performing much better than the state. The west score low there with twenty percent versus thirty-four at the state level. And in terms of the west not meeting, that's, that again is a concern for those fourth graders where we had thirty-four percent not meeting expectations versus the state's seventeen and Shawshine a four percent. So we need to look at those individual students in that data to see, is this an anomaly? Why does that, why is that so stark? It sticks out. In terms of math, north and west, again, above the state average. In the north, well below the state average in terms of not meeting expectations at ten percent compared to the west and the north, uh, excuse me, west and the state that come in at twenty-three percent. So grade five has three tests. This is the first year that students are given the science, technology, and engineering test. So the first graph is ELA, this is all students, grade five. And there, the north and west above state in the meeting and exceeding categories, and below in the not meeting. So again, that's, that's exactly what we want to see. For math, again, north and west above for meeting and exceeding and below for not meeting. And when we get to the science, we get a, a much more mixed picture, and I think it should not be surprising. Students are taking their first MCAS science test after being in school for five-plus years without a, a real concrete science program, right? So we leave that up to teachers, they do the best they can, but there's nothing that's sort of regulating the science instruction to make sure that it is truly aligned to the standards so that it, which is what this test is aligned to. So those numbers are not surprising, and this is something we hope to correct over time as students, as we eventually pilot and adopt a curriculum and, and we're in a better place. Same grade, high need students. See here, the north, once again, really outperforming the state fifty percent to thirty-four percent, and below the state average pretty significantly in the not meeting category with only three percent of their students not meeting expectations versus the state's fourteen. The west had many more students in the sort of partially, and again, that's that middle category that those are the individual students we need to move to the left. In terms of math, north did very well as compared to the state. West fell slightly below and slightly above the state average on not meeting expectations. And the science, again, you know, a little bit of a mixed, mixed results, although the, the students at the north in science did, did quite well considering. We move on to the middle school. This is grade six, all students. This is a decent picture here, slightly better than state average, and slightly below in the not meeting category. So you know, tracking very close to what we're seeing across the state. Our math performance, as I said earlier, tends to be better than ELA right now, and so the sixth grade math students in the exceeding and meeting expectations category did quite well, sixty-three percent of them there, and thirty percent of them impartially. Our high needs students, below state average in the exceeding and meeting categories, fortunately, and then tracking close to the state in terms of the not meeting expectations. And then we really almost mirror the state numbers with respect to math in grade six. I think the math piece speaks to the fact that we've had a consistent program in place for, I think, four years now, around five years, so that makes a big difference. Students are, are performing well, I think, at all levels, particularly in comparison to ELA with respect to mathematics. For grade seven, I think when compared to grade six, this, this cohort performed better in general. This is where we, you know, obviously we'd like to see that fifty-seven percent go higher, but that's, that's still eleven points higher than where the state average was, and then on the math side, you know, they, they perform quite, quite a bit better than the state. High need students for grade seven, again, we're looking at better than the state when it comes to meeting and exceeding expectations and below the state average for not meeting Grade eight, students take three tests. Again, they take ELA, math, and again, science, so this is their second try, and you can see the science in particular, they're, they're doing a little bit better. So they're getting three years or almost three years' worth of a solid science curriculum when they're in the middle schools, a curriculum that was purchased a couple of years ago, so they're, you know, they're, they're being trained with a program, instructed with a program that is aligned to next generation science standards, and that improves their scores there. All student categories for eighth grade in general look decent, a little better than the state performance. Our high needs group in the eighth grade, again, not, nothing that sort of sticks out except for our ELA exceeding and meeting expectations. And again, you see how high, when that happens, typically the next category, that partially meeting goes way up, and that's, those students need to be identified and moved over. They're now at the high school. So at the high school level, the picture changes, not just in Wilmington, but statewide. The tests at the high school level are, let's say, easier. They may be more attainable for students. This is a high-stakes test, and it's always been the case, students tend to perform better once they get into the tenth grade. The science test at the high school is a ninth grade test that's taken mostly biology. Some students take physics, and then they have the chemistry option if they don't pass those. If they don't pass the bio test, they can take the physics test the next year. But you can see, you know, our numbers are quite good, with a very small percentage of students failing, and you can see the categories change here, advanced and proficient, needs improvement, failing. That's the legacy MCAS categories that will be gone, but still exists for high school this, with this data, and you may have noticed it, but it existed for the science tests in grade five and grade eight as well. But you can see our, our numbers are, are quite good, and students that do fail the test in tenth grade have multiple opportunities to retake so that they can earn their diploma by twelfth grade. Even our high need students performed very well as well, so both are all students and high needs categories, did well at the high school level, which is pleasing to see. And I'll just talk quickly about, about growth. All of that was on the achievement side. This is all our growth scores. Some people like these types of scattered plots, some people get uncomfortable with them, but it's a lot of information there, but what you're looking at are grades three through eight sort of all together. The red dot on the left side, on the chart on the left, that is all students grades three through eight. So you can see when you take all of our kids in those grades and you put their growth scores together, we land pretty close to the center. And moving left to right is, is the growth percentile. Moving top to bottom is the achievement level, right? So you want to be as far up into the right as you can, right? You want high growth and high cheap, high achievement. So you can see that at the lower grades, most of our students sort of hover right around that median, right around the middle, with their achievement being somewhat there as well. And then on the high needs chart, they don't create one, at least I couldn't find one that spread them out by grade that way neatly, so they actually put students in the high needs category that represented by the blue dot, and then the yellow dot are all non-high needs. That's not all students, right? That's the students that are not in the high needs category. So in the other slide, you were seeing everybody together and then just the high needs. This is high needs and then non-high needs. So I think it's just important to note, as you see the difference, you know, it's, it's a little more dramatic when you, when you separate them out that way, that our students that are not in the high needs category tend to perform and grow at a higher rate than students that are in the high needs category. This is the math, same idea for grades three through eight. Not a significant difference. A similar place. There is though a larger separation in the non-high needs and high needs growth for math than there is in ELA. Tenth grade, all students. The green ball represents all students on the left with a fifty-three point two, and then we separate out high needs and non-high needs on the right, right? So again, you're looking at this going from left to right in terms of growth, so you can see that separation between the blue and the yellow circles gets quite pronounced at the high school level in terms of growth for ELA in grade ten. So forty-two point seven versus fifty-six point five. And in math, their growth is a little closer, right? Fifty-five point one to fifty-nine point one, but their achievement remains different, you know, significantly lower, average achievement. And then I will close with just a couple of slides that come from, with data from the District Analysis and Review Tool, that's known as DART through the Department of Education. These districts that are listed up there are identified by the state as being our DART district. So every district is assigned ten districts that the state, using a, a methodology that I can't quite dig out itself. Uh, you know, they're looking at demographics, they're looking at testing history, and they decided that these ten districts are the closest ones through Wilmington to compare themselves to. There are some questionable districts up there, of course. I wonder how we end up in a category with, say, a Westwood. A committee member raised a question about, why aren't we comparing ourselves with, say, a Burlington, right? So, and those are good questions. I can't answer them, but they're good questions. These are the districts, though, that they compare us to. Wilmington is represented by the blue bar. I added the state in just so you could sort of see where everybody falls. If you just look, say, grades three through eight, meeting or exceeding expectations, that's all test takers in grades three through eight, and you line us up, and that's in the back of your executive summary. If you take into account the districts that have tied scores, Wilmington ends up around the seventh spot for ELA grades three through eight, so below the halfway point in terms of where we fall with our like districts. And it's the same for math. We end up in about that same position for our performance. And again, this, this is for all students together, grades three through eight. And for grade ten, we fare a little bit better when you look, again, same districts we're comparing ourselves to. When you take into account the tie scores, we're in the top third or so of the pack when you're looking at these districts that we compare ourselves to according to Desi. So just to wrap up before we take questions, just some things to think about in terms of next step. I talked about looking at individual student data. I'm sure you're aware that we do what we call a data institute. It's usually two days in the summer. This summer it was changed a little because Glenn, being the new superintendent, needed some time with leadership team to do some important team-building activities and just getting ourselves together as a new team. So we did one day-to-day in the summer, and then we took the other day and we broke it up into two half-days, one in September and one October. So we technically had the same amount of time. It did lose a little bit of its effect, of its effectiveness being pushed off to those two half-days. It's hard to pull principals and CTLs out of their buildings, even if you're doing it at one o'clock in the afternoon when the day is wrapping up. Attendance gets to be tricky, so it, it was a challenge. But at those institutes, we look at student level, excuse me, school level data like we just did now. Principals, we're looking at data by teacher, which is not something we publicize, but that's something that's available to administrators. They can see how an individual classroom does with that particular teacher. And then they got down into the weeds. They started pulling out their individual students and talking about where these kids that fell into that lowest performing category, where are they now, what, what types of interventions are available to them. And so like, there's a name to those bar graphs that we just looked at so that if I'm Christine McMiniman, McMiniman at the north, I know that it's, these fifteen students need this extra support. Every one of them needs something different, but they can start to sort of tailor things for these kids. They know who they are. And we also looked at, you know, where can we celebrate? There were pockets, many pockets of, of, of achievement that we could celebrate, particularly when you start looking at it at the student and the teacher level. That's something that doesn't necessarily come out when you're putting them all together as, here's all of our third graders. But if you start to really, you know, get into the weeds, you can see there's a lot of areas to really be pleased. And finding areas that need attention and improvement so that they can have targeted plans on how to help these students moving forward. Under curriculum and instruction, we, we need to continue that implementation readers workshop and start to roll out writers workshop. I think some of the inconsistencies we're seeing at the elementary school have to do with the, the schools being in different places with respect to that literacy curriculum, right? And I've been in dozens of classrooms over the past several weeks, and you see that teachers are in different places. It's no fault of their own, it's just that's how the implementation has happened. So we have to continue to commit to that and get everybody up to that high level. We have some real superstars rolling out readers workshop right now, and so we, we're really building capacity and the ability to have teachers teach teachers, and there's a lot of exciting things going on with respect to literacy. We have to get that up and running consistently across all grades K through five. The workshop model is tied directly into readers writers workshop. If you are unfamiliar with that, it's, it's an amazing classroom experience to watch a teacher teach using the workshop model. They do a mini lesson, then they have kids go off and do some independent work while they're conferring with students, and it's just, it's just, it's, it's a beehive of activity, and kids are at different stations, working on different activities tailored to their needs, so we have to continue to give some focus PD on that model. And some professional development on math instruction. I've told you, we've got a program in place that helps, but now we have to talk about teaching students math. We did some of that on our PD day back on November sixth at the elementary level. You know about our science pilot and adoption. I think the data tells us that we need to focus on that. And then we have a word study program, a phonics program that's in place now for K through two. We'll be looking to pilot that next year for three through five. We don't have a phonics program three through five, and that's not unusual because they really didn't exist until most recently where some decent programs have come out, so they've been focusing on lower elementary. So we'll have something in place at the upper elementary grades and intermediate grades, hopefully next year, and the year, well, the year after, we'll pilot next year. Some programming, looking at our reading delivery in grades six through eight. There is reading there, but the, the, the program is, is different in the sixth grade, for example, than it is at the intermediate. example, than it is at the intermediate schools, so looking at how we might tailor that. We have an intervention specialist in math in grades six through eight, you know, making sure that we're utilizing her skills. You know, exploring more this relationship between our language base of separate programs and what that means in terms of inclusion and the co-teaching model, which, you know, we dabble in here or there, but it's not, you know, fully there. So these are just, these are, by the way, long-range goals, but things that we need to think about that I think will, will move the needle. Like these are instructional practices and programming considerations that will move the needle for us. In scheduling K eight, that's a, that's a hornet's nest, but I don't mean blowing up schedules and starting all over again, but just making sure that we are utilizing every minute that we need to in classrooms. The Reader's Workshop, Writer's Workshop model requires a two-hour literacy block. If you think of, we only have so many minutes in the day, right? They're at ninety minutes now, you know, what does that mean on the overall schedule at the elementary level? So we have to continue to look at that as we implement that. And then just continuing to focus on data, we have moved to an electronic data workbook K through five. This is quite an amazing document that was created by Jen White and Dana over in our technology department. They're just, it, it's amazing. A teacher has one spreadsheet, they can collect all of this important benchmark data that then is tied to that student name, so next year it actually gets loaded into a new spreadsheet for the next teacher and they see where that student left off in terms of literacy and math benchmarks that come with our Pearson program. Data teams at the building level, again, a long-range goal, but getting true data teams there so that this, these, this data that we're collecting in those workbooks can actually be looked at and you can come up with a finite intervention program. The next six weeks, we will do this for these students and we'll come back and we'll see if there's been any improvement. We have some of that going along, particularly at Boutwell and at Shawshene, but we need to do a little more work about that and have something consistent, I think, at all six elementaries and then move that up to the middle and high as well. All of us on the leadership team need to continue to just hone our instructional leadership skills. You know, we've got work with our consultants from TLA that are working with teachers to implement Reader's Writer's Workshop. They're willing to work with principals as well, so we can answer the bottom question when we're in classrooms. What should we look for? What quick feedback can we give the teachers that's going to have an impact right away to help improve instruction? And then the chronic absenteeism piece, that helps us overall. Obviously, kids need to be in school to learn and so we need to look at that at all levels. We, you know, we certainly didn't get zeros across the board there, but we didn't knock it out of the park either, so. And this is tricky. This isn't something that's simple. There have been questions about, in terms of chronic absenteeism, if there's a student that's got a long-term illness, the state takes into account that if a student is receiving services like tutoring outside of school, we can count them as present. So we do know we have students that are, are out long-term because of illnesses, but for providing them services, that does not count against the, the district or the school in that particular indicator. But just in general, I mean, chronic absenteeism is 10% of the school year, so that's 18 days and that may sound like a lot, but it, it adds up very quickly, so you can see why that can be problematic. But 18 days is a lot of time to miss for school. So, that was a lot and I'm sorry for that.
I'll, I'll just tease you a little bit and say that the packet that you gave us, the executive summary?
Yeah.
Thirty-five pages.
Yeah.
That's a lot of data. That's a lot of work. So I appreciate the time that our district leadership team and our building principals take to pull this, this information together. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. Couple of questions, two actually. With regard, we've always historically have seen decline in assessments at the, the schools that transition like three to fourth grade areas. I know the North seems to have seen in recent years to kind of come back a little bit with higher scores. I know this is just one snapshot of a, a larger picture. I was wondering if, as we address those areas of concern in those, you know, from third to fourth grade and fifth to sixth, if that's also another area that you're, you're looking at? Or if, you know, the other school-based assessments, that data may show something different other than what this is showing in those grades? So that was my first question. And then the second one, I, I wanted to ask you pertaining to the chronic absentee, the chronic illnesses, students with medical diagnoses. At what point does the district institute home tutoring services? Is it more than 10 days? Or, I mean, with someone who may have something of unexpected hospitalization and they may be hospitalized several times throughout the school year? At what, at what, I'm not sure what that looks like per se. I know at the high school level, sometimes that information is made up once the student returns back, but I, I just don't know what typically, and generally speaking, because I think it's case-by-case basis, but what does that look like? What, when does the district implement those services?
Yeah, I'll take that question and then go back. And I, and I have to say, I, being new to the district, I can't speak to exactly what that magic number is. I'm assuming that Wilmington probably approaches it like other districts where it is case-by-case and some students you know automatically that the illness is very serious and when he or she is out on day three, we know that he or she is not coming back for three months or for three weeks or. And then there may be others that are more fluid and you, you know, you realize that whoops, a two-day thing just turned into 10 and oh my gosh, we need to make sure that we're providing.
I didn't mean to catch up, because I just was thinking.
But it's something, it's something I can ask and get back.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And then just in terms of the transitional years, yeah, I think it is something that just in general that we're cognizant of, that anytime a student transitions schools, there's, there's, there's a disruption to them in some way, right? It's not, I don't want to make it sound like it's always this, you know, incredible negative impact, but it's a change, right? So that's, and this is all, I'm not basing this on any hard data, but it is something to consider. There are many transitions in this district and I think that that, you know, you have to assume that that plays a role to some degree. But in terms of the local data, because I think you raised a good point, MCAS is just really one data point of dozens or hundreds that we look at. I talked about that data workbook, that's where we're collecting all that local data. And, you know, for example, the sixth grade ELA teachers, just at the beginning of this year said, you know, can we get the BASS data, the, the reading test data from the West and the North? You know, so that's just, had just not been thought of, like let's push that up to them. But with this data workbook, it would be easier to do, right? So teachers are starting to think, okay, I'm a receiving sixth grade English teacher. Let me see where this kid's reading level is, right? They may not be using Reader's Workshop at sixth grade, but they can understand the scoring system and know exactly where the student is with respect to being on grade level or approaching grade level or far below grade level. So some of that is starting to happen. More communication. And I'll just say one other point on that, on our PD day on 11/6, there was a, a request for the fourth grade teachers, particularly at the North, to connect with third grade teachers at the Woburn Street. So there, there is that desire for them to, to do more connecting and those two transitional points.
Absolutely. Do, do, can I ask you, would it be of any, I don't want to say worth, that's not the right word, to try to gather that when, maybe next year when we were back here to say, you know, locally and, you know, teachers are reporting back that students are making those, you know what I mean, those, just so that we have a balance, because it's, like I said, it's been something historical within the district that they've tried to find ways to try to mitigate that kind of, I don't want to say going backwards, but I don't think it's a true representation of the learning or the ability of those students through those transitions as to what they're learning, so that's, I.
Yeah, I think you raised a good point. I had mentioned to Dr. Brand in my last district, I didn't, we didn't necessarily do an MCAS report, we did a testing report, which had many other pieces of data. We obviously would have to shrink what we present in terms of MCAS just to get the whole picture, but I think it would be more valuable for us to look at and that's part of this data worksheet that we created, so we have information that we can show that yes, on MCAS, this cohort group performed this way. However, on our local BASS data, we have this many students that are on grade level, because I think, you know, every piece of information tells another part of the story. So I'll look at sort of what that might, what this report might look like for the committee next year or Dr. Brand and see if we can't shape it a little differently. You know, because at, at the secondary level, that can include PSAT data and AP scores and SATs and ACTs, so kids are overtested.
I know, I agree.
We have many, many data points, so I, I do think that we should consider those as part of the big picture.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Branson, you look like you're.
I have a couple, but I have one right to that point, if that's okay. So the reading, the assessment score is done at the school, all the testing that's done from kindergarten up, haven't been traveling with the kids? They have been. With an acumen folder of some sort?
On paper, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're going to make sure, and then you're going to flip through them all, so yeah, no, it has been traveling.
I figured.
This is just a better way for us to track it.
Sorry. I'm a little panicked.
No, I'm glad you asked the question.
Okay. I have others, but go ahead. I think Tom and David have questions.
Mr. Talbot? He was talking about transitioning from the different schools and, you know, the average child in Wilmington will go to five different schools, so that is a lot of transition. You know, I know that we've talked about it in the master plan to consolidate and do that, maybe it's something that we really definitely need to look into accelerating that, because that is an issue.
Mr. Agstel?
All right. One question is, can you give a rough breakdown of our high needs group? Like what percentage is EL, what is economically disadvantaged and what's students with disabilities?
I can give some of that, but I don't have it all on the top of my head, so I think some of it is.
I didn't know if one like predominated or if it's roughly kind of even.
Yeah, in terms of those three populations, our, our students with disabilities comes at nineteen point four percent. Economically disadvantaged is 10% and EL is point eight percent. And in terms of our like communities, students with disabilities were on the, were on, on the higher side. Tend to fall in the middle in terms of economically disadvantaged and on the lower side for EL.
Okay. All right, so just a few comments that I want to make. One is about the chronic absenteeism issue. This, this one is always a little bit tricky for districts because there's a lot of research that shows that like students who really are out of school for a lot of time get much lower outcomes, but at the same time, you don't want to have incentives for sick kids to come to school, people who should be out of the, out of the classroom, because then you end up with not, something that doesn't show up in the chronic absenteeism, but other kids who are just out of school because they catch illnesses from kids who shouldn't be there. And they're, I think they're still talking about that element at the, at the board level, the state level. That might, that might change a little bit in the future. I think that the, the, the science results definitely show the need for the science curriculum, that, and not, and not so that we can raise the MCAS scores, that's not the point of it, but, but it's just an indicator that we need to have, you know, systemic science instruction that's aligned to the state standards. And, and so I'm glad that, that we have that pilot happening this year and that that will be a, a good, a good point going forward. I think looking through at the, at the intermediate level, and I, and it's not a question that I, that I think we can get an answer to tonight, but I think really clearly, we need to be asking why the North is outperforming the West so much? Because having two intermediate schools in the same town, we should be able to control for a lot of factors. We have the, you know, roughly the same student population as far as demographics, we're going to have the same district leadership, but in almost all measures, not just the achievement, like the meeting and exceeding, but mostly in growth and then also just on the accountability indicators. North has a much higher percentage in the, in the accountability indicator. So it's also doing a better job of meeting those targets and of addressing those lower, it's lowest 20%. So I don't know that we have the answer to that right now, but I think that we need to look closely at like why are they getting substantially stronger results and see what we can do to replicate that across, across to the West as well. And one last thing that I want to, to point out, because I found this, found this really curious, is that for our high school grades and for our grades three through eight, I'm looking at pages eight and nine of the packet, if people want to look there, are the percentage for both of those schools are the, for both groups are the same, 56%. So we have a 50%, the criterion reference target percentage, the last part of those charts on page eight and the top of page nine. But the way that we get there is completely different in both cases, because the, the lowest performing group and the all-needs group get averaged, so it's, it's 50/50 each way, which is pretty actually significant in itself, because that 20% of students is counting for 50% of the accountability percentage there. But at the, at grades three through eight, it's the, we have 39% for grades three through eight, sorry, for the, for all students, 71% for the lowest performing and it's pretty much reversed at the high school level. That it's 76% at the all students and only 38% at the lowest performing. And that might be partially because the, the MCAS data is so skewed at the high school level, because everything is so much higher than even your lowest 20% is still doing relatively well on, on testing, but.
Yeah, I did notice that.
But I thought that that was something that was, that maybe was worth looking at a little more closely, because it was so striking.
Did you have any other questions?
I do. Okay. I'm curious, sort of actually in line with what David is asking, you mentioned that the rollout of things like reading workshop and writing workshop had been sort of varied across the district. So I know it rolled out the West in 2016, at least reading workshop did in 2016. I would just love to know, sort of, I'm sure that they're side by side, like who's rolling, you know, kind of when we talk about PBIS, we have like a pretty explicit plan, we know when they rolled it out, we know what year they're in. Do we have that information or can we get that for a future meeting to sort of see how long has this been happening, what sorts of coaching has been going on? I would just like to see what, what it looks like, I guess, on paper. And then is there an action plan for full implementation? So I'm thinking 2016, what does the, what does the coach or the CTL say about when should it be full implementation if that's when it started? And so is the North ahead in that full implementation phase and we're just, we're catching up? What's, so that might be really helpful for us to look at.
I can provide that, yeah.
At the next one. And then my other question was about the student growth percentile and is that, so you mentioned a lot about using the data points and I'm guessing that that's used as well. So we're looking at that student growth to say, oh, here, they were here, for some reason their growth percentile went down, they're still meeting expectation, but I guess how is that data, how is that used at the district level?
Yeah, I think unfortunately, like most districts, we focus heavy on the achievement piece, which is, it's important, but to me, the growth is the more important piece. And, and if you're really looking at it, just track how a cohort's doing, then that's the, I think that's the measure you want to look at more so than the achievement. It's, and a lot of times, we're comparing fourth grade this year versus fourth grade last year, like that says very little to me, because it's a totally different group of kids. I want to know how, you know, how far those fourth graders came, the same as, as the reading benchmarks that we do, you know, are you, you know, that's why we're tracking that now, what letter are you now versus where you were in September? But I'm not going to say that we're there yet, because we're still so, like everybody, focused on the achievement level, you know, what's our percentage of meeting and exceeding expectations? I think we have to put more of a focus on that growth piece and see how far kids are coming in, because you can see that we have some concerning dots on that, on that grid, particularly with students that are in the high needs category.
Can you just, Brian, can you just explain that, the student growth percentile for the public, so they can understand, when parents are looking at those results, I'll often say, look at the SGP, that's really important, but I'm not sure that that is clear to families?
Yeah, so that, that number is critical, right? So if your SGP is, say, 56 for your individual child, that means that your child grew better, grew more than 50%, 56% of the students in that student, in your child's grade with your child's similar testing history, right? So that's what makes it even more accurate. It's not just about, you know, if you're talking about a fourth grade student, it's not just how he grew versus the entire fourth grade population of the state, it's how he grew against the population of fourth grade students like him or her in the state. So it really is an accurate measure of how far your child has progressed as a learner over the course of that year. Again, it's one test, it's, it's the MCAS, but if there's a, if there's a measurement from the MCAS, I think that holds a lot of water, like that's the number that, you know, you want to look at. And I also throw the caveat that if you've had an incredibly high growth year and then the next year you have a very low number, like you need to keep that into consideration too, right? You're not going to, most kids aren't growing at, at an 80% growth rate year after year after year after year. So I think sometimes people look for that high number consistently and then if it drops off, you think, you know, see, it's all sort of relative, but it is a very, you know, I think it's a really critical indicator for us to look at.
Along the topic of, of looking at student growth, so I think I heard you say in the not meeting category, we look at those kids as individuals, what can we get them? the not-meeting category, we look at those kids as individuals, what can we get them to bump them up? I also would be curious to see, are, are students that are in that advanced column, do we also look at them at the same level? How, and consider, how can we individualize their learning opportunities so that they continue to see that growth? You know, what are we doing and what can we do for those kids? Because I think, I think it's important, the other group of kids that I'd be curious to see, what else we can do for, the kids that are falling in the middle, they're doing fine, they're proficient, but they're right on the cusp of that advanced, what can we do for those folks, right? What can we do for those kids to get them just a little bit more over to that advanced column?
Yeah.
Because they're pretty close, they're right there on the cusp.
Sure. You, you raise a very good point, and I think that is part of looking at the student, individual student data. But because resources are limited, where you focus, you focus on, you know, I talked a lot about the kids in the middle section, you know, getting them out of that, partially meeting to meeting, you know? And I think sometimes we think, well, the kids that are not meeting, they must be receiving services.
Yeah.
With their special education, or they have, you know, so, you know, they're getting some support already, you know, so you gotta be careful that you don't think that way either. And all the kids on the top, they're okay, you know, they're, they're...
They're fine. Don't worry about that?
They're excellent, you don't need to worry. So, you're right, you know, each category has its own set of challenges to try and either make sure you're continuing to challenge students or push them harder if they're at the top, or raise that floor as the, as the state's trying to do with this new, new system.
And I will say that I like to hear that the state is changing the terminology and the vocabulary a little bit, not so much the, closing the gap, which most people in this room know that was a pet peeve of mine. I've talked about it numerous times, but, but raising the floor makes a little more sense to me.
Yeah. And the new system is far superior, and, and I, you know, Massachusetts should be proud of itself for this. I think it's a, I think it's a well-done. I mean, you know, there are flaws with every system, but I think it's something to be, to be pleased with, you know?
Sure.
It's been a lot of work for them.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions or comments on the MCAS? Thank you very much for your presentation. Dr. Brand, you look like you wanted to add a couple of things.
If I may, just very quickly on this item, a couple of things. First, the absenteeism piece is, is an important one, and I appreciate you raising that. And I think it sounds clear to me that we need to, amongst all of this, better understand what that looks like in reality across our district. You raise a very valid point around sickness, illness, and, and other such factors. What equally would be of concern is if we have students that are missing school for other reasons. And I'm not, I can't comment on that right now, but I'm starting to gather, grow some curiosity around what that might look like, and I think we need to take a careful look at that and sort of parse that out. The, just the piece about the DART districts, I know there was some question around that, and for members of the community that might be a little bit confused. I certainly have had the experience, and it's no different, I think, in any community, sort of setting your sights specifically on what communities you seek to compare yourselves to. And obviously, I've still got a lot of learning in terms of where the town focuses its comparisons to similar communities, and similarly, where do we too? And I know geographically, there are districts around us where people might say, hmm, how come we're not with Burlington? So, the DART, doing a little bit more, a little bit more investigation, the question around comparison, what did that DART look like, and what's the methodology? Total enrollment, percentage of low-income, percentage of VLL students, and those with disabilities, amongst some other factors. And that those DART comparison districts could change slightly from year to year, depending on what those categories look like. So, it's not the only comparison group of communities that in the, going forward, we might look to for different things, but I just think that puts important context around it. And if I may, finally, I appreciate your thanks to the administrative team. The reality is, is that Dr. Regan holds a responsibility for putting together all of this report, and I just want to thank him, you know, it's a, coming into the position new as he is, also trying to wrap his head around a new system, and understanding what this system is, is, is shared across the Commonwealth, but certainly for him and, and his role, new. So, I want to thank him for his endless hours putting together this report and information. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Next item up is a update on the Wilmington Middle School Principal Search, and I believe, Dr. Brand, that is all you.
It is, thank you very much. So, in your packet this evening, you'll, you'll note three documents under this, under this agenda item, Middle School Principal Search. First, a memo to the committee, a, in addition to that, the slide packet we'll go through, and then the job posting, or what will be the job posting itself. And so, I, I just wanted to take a few moments to walk you as a committee, as well as the community, through my thinking and my plan around moving forward. It is, it is the point in time in which we need to do this, to get things going. And speaking of getting things going, oh, look at that. Wow, thanks, Miss Dixie. All right. So, first off, this will be, this search for the Middle School Principal, moving forward, will be an open search process. That is to say that we will, and I'll speak a little bit more about this, this is not an internal posting, this is not an external posting, this is a worldwide posting, if you will, and open for anyone to apply. There, I'll also touch upon this in a few moments, this will be a search that will be inclusive of all key stakeholders throughout the middle school community specifically, and also, I'll use the term balance in terms of trying to acquire feedback through the process and along the way. And there will be opportunities for staff, as well as the community, to be involved in, in, in this search. And I would say that this, this slide, quite frankly, will be one that I will use for any leadership search. I think that these sort of three key things for me are essential when we're talking about seeking those that are going to serve in a leadership capacity. In this case, it happens to be for the Middle School Principal, but sort of values that I believe are inherently important. I also think that when we're talking about leadership searches, again, this one here, there are, really, when I think about a search, there are four phases or stages that I like to center a search around, and I have no doubt that many or all of these have been used, certainly here in the district in the past. First off, the search committee, a really important first step and role in terms of coming together, receiving the applications, and then ultimately making recommendations to myself as your superintendent in terms of which candidates to advance in the process. So, that's sort of step number one. Step number two will be a day-long visit to the district. I think it's incredibly important to have a potential candidate come and visit the district so that he or she can learn more about us, and similarly, we can learn more about them. And that, of course, in this particular context, will mean meeting with staff, with parents and guardians, and community members, and students as well, as the leadership team throughout the district. Step or part three will be a site visit to the candidate's home district. I believe very much in this process. It takes time to take a team out to visit where a particular candidate may work, but it's invaluable on multiple levels, and time I've found, and I do believe, very well-spent as yet another opportunity to learn more about the potential candidate. And finally, the selection process. And, you know, as, as your superintendent, I, I believe that one of the most important jobs that you asked me to do is to oversee and lead, and in this case, hire leaders. And so, it's not a responsibility that certainly is taken lightly. The search committee, part one, that I mentioned, really is a number of different things. It's, it's receiving, I mentioned, not just the, the applications, but also what will be provided to that group is a candidate profile. What are the skills, qualities, characteristics, experiences that the middle school community, and I say that broadly, that includes both staff as well as, as community members, what are they looking for in the next permanent principal for the school? It will be reviewing the applications that come in, and ultimately, decisions have to be made, of course, to select candidates that will be interviewed, whatever that number is determined to be. And then, carrying out the screening interviews and identifying, as I mentioned before, for me, those, those candidates that will move forward in the process. The, the proposal for the search committee composition is highlighted in the memo, but also on this slide, and it's, it's my intention to have four middle school teachers or educators. That's an ideal sort of grouping, it may not pan out that way, but the, the point there of the Special Education Guidance Unified Arts Core Subjects is to try and strive for a balance of representation. We have obviously multiple different departments in any particular school facility, and I think that it's important to try and gather together a cross-section of those folks. Middle School Assistant Principals, or CTLs, leadership, two is proposed to be a part of the committee, a support staff member that works in the building, so that would be a, certainly could be a educational assistant, an administrative assistant, but somebody else that, that also is a part of the school community. One central office administrator, four parent, uh, middle school parents guardian, excuse me, or guardians, and one other principal or, or director, but ideally, for me, a principal in the district. That can, that makes up, if my math is correct, I think thirteen members. It's a, it's a large group, but I, I believe that these groups can function very well when, when there's clarity around sort of their role and, and how to function together. Our Director of Human Resources will coordinate the search and work closely with this committee. I've reached out to the Wilmington Teachers Association to help in identifying staff representatives, and similarly, the middle school PAC to assist with the parent and guardian volunteers. And so, in the next couple of days, I'll start to roll out communication and an invitation to both staff as well as the middle school community for those that might be interested in serving on the committee. And in that correspondence will be who to reply to, and, and then those respective groups will help provide me with the respective names. The advertisement will be broad. There, I recognize that members of the committee or committee might not know all of those acronyms, but School Spring is a, is a, is a prominent resource that we use for job postings, as do many districts. MSAA, Massachusetts School Administrators Association, I think I have that right, they just recently reformed, so I think I have that right. The National School, Secondary School Principals Association, and Top School Jobs are all fairly prominent places where typically districts will look to advertise, as will we. The timeline is outlined on this slide, as well as in your packet. We are right exactly where I think a district with this kind of circumstance should be. And I know that, and I respect that some might think, well, maybe it's a little early. I would suggest that it's right exactly where we could, we should be, having watched leadership searches for positions like this for many, many years. There is a, there is a dearth of candidates out there typically, and so, the sooner the better that a district can get out there and identify for prospective candidates that are looking for a position, the better. So, we are going to move forward and advertise before the Thanksgiving break. It will run through the holidays, and it will close, as you can see, on January the fourth. So, I think an ample amount of time to allow those that might be considering applying to do so. Between that time after the posting goes live, if you will, we will, I'm sorry, I said November fifteenth, November nineteenth, there will be a couple of forums that have already been scheduled, and again, in that correspondence that I mentioned, that I'll soon get out to our respective communities. On December the fifth, there will be an opportunity for middle school parents or guardians to come together to, in person, to provide a, a feedback on, on that, as we start to build that candidate profile. And similarly, for staff, on December the tenth, I'll be letting the middle school staff know that there'll be an opportunity for folks to come together, if they wish, to provide information for us to consider. There also will be a, a brief survey that will go out to both groups to, to do the same, as we seek to try and identify what it is that ultimately folks are looking for in the, the next middle school principal here in Wilmington. I mentioned January fourth is the deadline to receive applications. Mid-January, the committee will come together, receive those applications, and conduct interviews. That, that committee, my goal is to have formed before we go for the winter break, so people will know who they are, and they'll know which dates, more or less, their time commitment will necessitate. The week of January twenty-eighth, if all goes as, as planned, and we don't have too many interruptions of some sort or another, the week of January twenty-eighth, finalists will be announced. The week of February the fourth, finalists will visit Wilmington. Week of February the eleventh, site visits to the finalist's home districts, and then immediately after the February break, the finalist will be announced. So, it's a, it's a long process, to be sure, but one that I think in order to hit all of these various steps is an important piece. I, I also just want to take this opportunity and highlight this piece, because I, I do think that this is important. And, you know, I mentioned a fairly large committee a few moments ago, but it's understood that there's lots of people who may be interested in participating, but there's only so many spots in that committee. And so, I would suggest that there are other opportunities for people, staff, parents, guardians, to also contribute to and be involved in this process. I mentioned the survey that will go out, that's one way. The forum I mentioned is the second way. And then, a third way, there, there will be opportunities combined, both in the day as well as in the evening, for staff and for parents, guardians, to meet the prospective finalists and to provide myself with feedback along the way. So, certainly, please don't be discouraged if you're interested in participating and you might not find yourself on the, on the search committee. So, with that, I, I'm happy to take any questions, should members of the committee have.
Mr. Toppet.
Having gone through the process for this before with your hiring, you, you had a thing of, of visiting their current employer, which I don't know if, I don't really agree with that. I mean, there's not many jobs out there where you would go back to where they're working and say, how, how are they doing? Also, the fact that, what if they're not employed at this, you know, current time, then, does that leave them at a disadvantage over somebody else? Or if, let's say they're out of state, they come from Connecticut or New York, you can't expect people to travel all the way to another state. So, I don't, I don't know if that part of it is really worthwhile.
Well, no, it's a fair question. And, you know, I, I think over the years, I've come to accept that if, these roles are The public nature of these roles is unique. These roles meaning school leadership positions. And having participated in site visits, as I use the term, on numerous occasions before, it is a lot of time spent, even if it means driving to Hartford, but it's invaluable time. You know, this is a commitment for seeking a school leader to come into any position. And I think interviews themselves are one piece of information gathering, reference calls are another piece. Being able to hear directly from people who work with the individual is a whole other set of information. And so, I've, I've just found that it's time that, it's a lot of time, and it is a lot of commitment. But I've also found that if somebody's not in a particular role, and sometimes that's the case, there's a way around that, to figure out opportunities to also gather, or to have opportunities to talk with colleagues, supervisors, those that they've supervised. And again, in the nature of these jobs, at least in New England, and maybe this is not the case across the country, but at least in New England, this, this site visit concept is not terribly unique, from what I've seen anyway, in different leadership roles.
Mr. Buick, and then Mrs. Bryson.
Yeah, on the, the search committee, if I did my math correctly, you look like seventeen members.
Oh, sorry.
That's, that's all right. That is, that's an awful lot of people to coordinate. You've done these searches before, I assume that this is something that you don't find to be daunting?
I think it's been counting, some of the...
Yeah. Did I?
Yes.
I went through it quickly when I was reading through this.
It's quite possible, I said, so, yeah. Fifteen, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did double, I overcame one, all right.
I carried the one there, all right.
It's the new math.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, I misspoke, so I apologize, sorry.
So, with, so with fifteen people, would you expect them all to do these site visits?
Great question, no.
Okay.
The proposal would be to have a, a smaller representative group of that, along with likely members of the, the central office leadership team to be a part of that.
That selected number would be the same for each visit? Would be the same members for each visit?
Ideally, it would be. And, and where that, sometimes I've seen is not always possible is if you do have large geography to cover, you know, to, to balance that out. But similar to conducting reference, I think there's a way, I believe that there's a way, I've seen a way where... I've seen a way where you can still be specific in terms of the types of information that you're looking to gather, and then what's important is gathering those groups together to gather that feedback, to acquire that feedback.
Great.
Mrs. Bryson. I have a question just about the, so the deadline to receive the applications is January fourth, and the initial interview is hoping to begin around the fourteenth.
Right.
The whole committee's reviewing, I just don't see a spot in there for the reviewing of the applications. Is that supposed to be happening the week of the seventh?
So before we go for winter break, the intention will be to have this committee come together, they'll have clarity around what their role is, how to access the information for where the applications will be received. So all of that kind of background table setting, if you will, will be in place. And then ideally, as soon as, those will be sort of a rolling admission, so there'll be access provided ahead of the fourth for people to start to look at candidates. It's not my intention to, it wasn't the question you asked, but it's not my intention to screen applications. The, I think that's a primary function of the committee itself, to do so. So it'll be a hard deadline on the fourth, but in reality, people will-
And the whole committee will review them in that timeframe, essentially.
Yes, yeah.
Mrs. Burns, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Talbot. Mr. Ragsdale, did you have a question as well?
Okay. All right, Mrs. Burns.
An easy question, because this is similar, this is a new concept that I haven't seen in the district. So when this group, the search committee, does form, does it fall open to public meeting laws? Will there be a chair to drive that discussion? How does that look like?
So-
Yes, that's basically my job.
So this committee would not fall to open meeting law. And certainly, with R H R Director's approach to this search, there would be clarity around ground rules, clarity around working together, understanding and commitment for folks that this, you know, applying for these kind of positions is, you know, this is sensitive and important decisions. And so confidentiality, that kind of thing, all would be able to be established and laid out for committee members to know what the expectations are.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale, and then I'll jump back to you, Mr. Talbot.
Yeah, so a subcommittee established by the superintendent is not a public body, which I can say with confidence, since I just took the open meeting law session at M A S C this last, last weekend. So all set there. I wanted to just know, do you have a number in mind of the number of finalists that the committee will be charged with identifying? Are we looking for, you know, three finalists, five finalists, somewhere in the range?
Yeah, that's a great question. So no, not specifically. I think, you know, my words to the committee when I have a chance to meet, and I do intend to, and I typically do intend, meet with the committees prior to when they start their work, will be, what's most important to me is that I would want them to advance whatever candidate they can see, based upon the rather limited knowledge and information they have about them, forward in the process, if they could imagine them, envision them to be in that role. That if everything else checks out or pans out along the way, that they, you know, they've met the criteria as best of a match for the candidate profile that I mentioned earlier, and that, and there's no doubt, based upon the information, that's quite limited, of course, at that point in time, that they could see. Ideally, it's not less than three, but that being said, there's no, to me, magic number.
Okay, and there, I assume that they're following the, sort of the same type of process of, first that they review all the applications, and then decide which of these are people we're interested in interviewing.
Correct.
And from the interviewees, then they advance finalists-
Yes.
-from there to you.
Yes.
Mr. Talbot.
You know, you kind of mentioned a little bit, but I take it it's going to be a blind kind of viewing, where the names will be redacted, so that they're picking, you know, from-
I've never approached a search like that, that the-
Isn't that what we did with ours, when we did for superintendent?
I think you're thinking when we chose the representatives for the screening committee, we had the names taken off.
I thought we did it with the actual-
But not with the, no, they were given to us confidentially. The screening committee had a packet, had packages-
Yeah.
-with all of the applications, that were all confidential, but the names were on there, and then we needed to return them after.
Oh, the names were, okay, I thought they were redacted, just-
No, I think you're thinking of just when we were choosing the parent guardian representatives on the screening committee, those names were redacted.
Oh, okay.
That was the conversation we had.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding this agenda item?
Mrs. Bryson, the director of human resources, it says the coordinator, will she also be the chair, or will a chair be a point, you meant chair?
I'm sorry, yes, I meant to coordinate it. She won't be, the intention is not to have her as a voting member, if you will, but rather to orchestrate, coordinate. I've never used, I myself have never identified a chair, but she'll be responsible for orchestrating, making sure the committee carries out their role.
So I'm just, sorry, can I, I'm still not good at this after all this time. So I'm just thinking back to our, the screening committee for the superintendent position, having someone who, obviously we had a firm supporting us, but having someone kind of remind the group to go back to the profile was very helpful for us. I guess, will she serve that role?
Yes.
Or, okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Anybody else? Okay. So moving on to our next agenda item, that is strategic planning, Dr. Burns.
Thank you. In your packet, there is a outline of the work that's been done to this point in time as we get set to also move forward with an important piece of work, and that's around developing the next strategic plan for the district. As you know, it's one of my goals that you have supported, and I put forth for the year, and ambitious as it will be, but as necessary as it will be, you know, and some of the conversation this evening reminds and rings true for me of the absolute essential need to ensure that we have the priorities set for us as a district going forward. And that we will, we will do, not me alone, but with another group. So in the memo, it outlines the work that's been done with, and thanks to Julie as your chair, along with the central office leadership team. I had the opportunity to meet with them, and we considered three applications or proposals for helping the district in this work of facilitating our efforts around developing a strategic plan. As you can see here, the three entities or groups were New England School Development Council, or N E S D E C, Future Management Systems, and Dr. Lori Leicas, Principal Consultant of Creative Coaching. I reached out to these individuals back in September, and after having come to understand that they are or have been active around the general New England area in helping facilitate strategic planning, and so they provided respectively, myself, with information and a proposal, and then I in turn shared that with your chair and central office leadership team. Reference checks were conducted to try and gather more information, ultimately, in the end, on two groups. That was N E S D E C and Dr. Lori Leicas. Future Management Systems, after further consideration and just a concern of capacity, decided to withdraw their interest, if you will. And so following those reference checks, the group then met again, and ultimately put forth a recommendation that it seemed to be a good match, and strong references for other districts that have recently been working with Lori, to ask her to partner with us to help support the work around the strategic plan. So maybe I'll just pause there at that point, if I may, if there are any questions perhaps for not just myself, but any other folks that were here. Paul, Brian, and Julie helped with that.
Mrs. Burns.
I have two general questions. I was just, and I've been on the fence as to whether or not I was going to ask this. A, is this something that we have to vote on, because it is a resource, a public money resource? And the second piece is, again, historically, so that's all the only thing I have to go by. Previously, we've always had some information with regards to the bidding process and the proposals. So I was just kind of curious, I have no, I have no disagreement with how this transpired. I was just wondering typically, if there was a particular, if it just, if this was just a new route, or if this is something that, in the future, that's how you present? That's, I'm just trying to, I guess, a nuance. I just wanted to make sure. It's not a big thing, so I don't want to-
Yeah, no, I mean, I, maybe Paul, he would talk about maybe the financial piece of the bidding, but just to be clear, we did not go out to bid with this.
Okay.
This was approached as a consultant for, I mean, it's not exactly professional development, but similar to that. Would you-
Yeah, as far as, you know, the financial impact, we, the superintendent and I spoke a little bit, and, you know, we can find some money to support, you know, pay a consultant, if that's the direction we decided to go.
Okay.
As you know, every year, if we do the budget, we start now, the budget's done, and so forth, and voted on in February, town meeting in May, things change from now until then, and so as staff might leave, we replace them with lower paid staff, if you will. So we use those savings to cover some of that, and we do have some, you know, enough to cover what was unidentified here.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just, I was just wondering, only because in the hiring of the consultant, it's a, you know, financial resource, that I don't know if that goes before the board for proof, I know that we did approve. Seeking a consultant, absolutely, I just didn't know what was encompassed in that, but that, I'm just trying to find, it's all simply clarification.
Sure. And just as the memo suggests, I would love your approval this evening for moving forward with Lori, Dr. Leicas, to engage her in that capacity. The second part of the memo, if I may, just the proposal, starting to think very quickly here about a search committee, or not, the, you search committee, I'm sorry. My apologies. Strategic Planning Committee composition, I will amend that. This is not a search committee, I'm sorry. The table there on the memo outlines, at least as a starting point, prospective groups or stakeholder groups, if you will, of which to try and gather representation from. This is one of those, you know, you can imagine this type of committee, large, but important in terms of trying to pull together representation from, you know, key constituent or stakeholder groups. I won't list or go through them all here, but certainly be very interested from members of the committee if there's a group, an individual, an office that has been perhaps overlooked or not mentioned, that you would suggest reaching out to, which is what I'd, you know, like to do following your support to move forward with this in the next coming days.
Mr. Talbot, you had a question?
Yeah, so for a viewing audience that we have out there, you know, could we explain exactly what this means, strategic planning committee, you know, committee, exactly what it entails?
Sure, sure. So to put it in context, right now, the district did have in place a strategic plan, you know, that type of document that identified the key priorities and goals around which time and resources ideally would, you know, would have been attached to, to help move the district forward. That strategic plan came to an end at the end of last school year, and so we are in between plans right now, and this effort here is really centered around bringing together a cross-section of staff and community members to formulate, if you will, the next strategic plan for the district, that will do just that, identify those key things that we believe we should be setting our sights on to help, to move the needle, to help move us forward as a district. And the goal here is bringing together this committee to work together quickly, but thorough, in a thorough manner, between approximately January and the first part of June, to formulate a plan that would then be brought before the committee, ultimately for approval, and then would take effect beginning in the next school year. So I hope, does that help?
No, that's, like I said, just the viewing audience.
Did you want me to go through the groups? I'm sorry, for the, did you want me to list the groups? So in the memo, proposed, in no particular order, community representatives, parents and guardians, with just an asterisk there to make sure that we have representation from all of our different levels across the district, CPAC, high school students, school committee, town manager or his designee, the Wilmington Community Fund, administrators across the district, not all of them, but, you know, a representative from teachers, student services staff, support staff, related services, occupational therapy, physical therapy and the like, care staff representative or representatives, member of the, or members of the central office leadership team.
Mrs. Burns.
So how many total are you estimating, we'll make up number-wise?
I think when I started to put sort of a pencil number beside these, you know, I think we were quickly in the thirty-ish, high twenties, thirty group, you know. That said, though, and certainly in conversation, a couple of conversations now with Dr. Leicas, you know, that's, it varies from district to district, but that's not atypical, you know, when you're trying to engage in this work, and so someone like herself is skilled in facilitating that kind of work, so that's, but in that range, roughly.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, I think to Mrs. Burns' point, yes, the intention is that the school committee will take a vote to accept or deny the recommendation that was made by this group. Dr. Lori Leicas has been put forth as the recommendation. At this point, I will ask for a motion to accept the recommendation. Mr. Buick.
I move that we engage Dr. Lori Leicas of Creative Coaching to assist us.
Great. Do I have a second? Mr. Ragsdale, I saw your hand first. All those in favor? That looks like it will be unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I would just also say, regarding the Strategic Planning Committee composition, that's a multiple. Yes, it could be a large number, I think we don't need to hash that out this evening, that could take a long time, but that would be the next step, is to look at that. Okay? Great. All right, next item up is a update on the recent conference, that's the M A S C and the M A S S Conference that happened last week. I know we had two members, Mr. Ragsdale was in attendance, and Mrs. Burns was in attendance. Mrs. Burns, if you want to give us, as our delegate, just a brief rundown on how those resolutions went down.
I'd be happy to.
I think there were nine, right? Did I get the number right this time?
Nine with the bylaw, right.
Okay, all right, nine plus the bylaw. If you could just give us a brief rundown, I think we had some pretty healthy discussions the last two meetings, but just let us know what the other delegates thought.
Very good. I will give you the name of the resolution, and if anybody has any questions, please ask. So a new change to the delegate assembly, we had a changeover as the Board of Directors. They will now be going with the, running the delegation assembly, similar to how the National School Board Association does by announcing all the resolutions, and those that are not, there's nobody in the assembly who would want to discuss it and want to just pass it as it is, they go through all whatever, and anybody who wants to discuss will say, "Hold." Otherwise, they'll group those that aren't being held and vote on altogether, and then go back to those who are being held for further discussion. So just a little bit in change of protocol of the assembly. So Resolution One, which spoke to rejecting the arming of educators, passes as written. Resolution Two, small and rural districts, passes with amendments. Julio brought forth that, under the therefore be resolved, that basically they split the therefore be resolved into two separate items. It pertains to the calling for a working group to advise the legislature on the best public policy solutions to support small rural school districts. That was being, that was brought forth as one item, known as two A, and then the- That was being, that was brought forth as one item, known as two A, and then the third, second and third paragraph, that, excuse me, and the first two paragraphs was amended as two A, and then the second paragraph, under therefore be resolved, was a separate amendment because of the difference in the context as to what it focuses on. But in saying that, they both passed separately. Rejecting of the Federal Department of Education, I think this speaks to the merging of it, passes as amended. There was a small typo that someone picked up, that was the amendment. Resolution Four, which dealt with regional school transportation, it was actually sent back to the authors of that resolution, which was the MASC Board of Directors, for revision review. Basically, there was a lot of discussion that, as it was written, it pertained to regional districts and the, no, there was no transportation, limited transportation bidders. There was a discussion about how that impacts all of public school districts. There's so much discussion that it was sent back to the Board of Directors to be brought up for next year. Resolution Five, reporting and accountability standards, passes as it was, as written. Resolution Six dealt with reproductive health education, that too passes with amendments. Similar to Resolution Two, they felt that it was separated into two actions. Under the first paragraph of therefore it be resolved, Pittsfield School Committee requested that the first sentence be renoted as six A because it was state, it was state applicable, and that the second sentence of that, under that same context, be noted as, noted as six B, since it really pertains to a federal action. So, after doing that, both of those pass with amendment. Resolution Seven, gender identity inclusive to athletic participation policy, discussion was very similar to what we had with our board, that too passes with amendments, the change being that the descriptive of gender neutral was removed per Melrose School Committee request, with the state's recent ballot question passing, it reaffirms that right of the transgender community to use the appropriate bathroom of the gender they identify with. So, that was the change to that language. And there was addition, addition of language added that stated that the accountability standards be put in place by the MIAA to ensure the standards of protection are adhered to. So, those are the two changes. On Resolution Eight, sports wagering, it passes as written. Resolution Nine, access to information for parents and students who are clients of special ed, it passes with amendments. Framingham School Committee requested that school days be changed to business days, and there was, again, there's a lot of discussion behind this resolution, much of which was encompassed the discussion that we had here, so. And then pertaining to the annual meeting, bylaw changes the date as to when resolutions were to be submitted, that passes as written as well.
Mr. Ragstall?
All right, so I first want to say thanks to Mrs. Burns for serving as my MASC Sherpa. She showed me the ropes and introduced me to people, and showed me how it all works, so I was very appreciative. It was nice to, nice to be there with her.
My pleasure to bring you into my crazy world.
And it was also nice to see Dr. Brand, who was able to be down there on Friday as well, and the three of us got together for lunch, and that was nice to have a little bit of the team, larger team, down there. So, while I was there, most importantly, I was able to do my statutory requirement for the Charting the Course in the first year after being appointed, so got the whole governance, ethics, budget, finance, open meeting law, sort of the whole shebang that they run through, which was a really nice, a really nice class, and good to see a lot of the different MASC field directors who kind of subbed in at different points to different parts of that. So, that was nice to get to know them a little bit as well. In addition to that, I was able to see two sessions, that took up most of my time, but I had two other sessions. One was about school start times, and that was a very interesting discussion presented by the Monomoy Regional School District down on the Cape, about how they went about the process of changing their school start times and what benefits they saw, and so that will be something, it'll be interesting to talk about more in detail when we come back to that issue in the future. And then I sat for a session with Dorothy Presser, basically the MASC conference version of the goals part of the workshop that we were not able to get to in our workshop with her earlier in the year. So, I was able to kind of see, they didn't, of course, didn't go through the specifics with a school committee on their goals, but I sat through the, was able to watch her presentation on goal setting, and I thought that that was very, very good, and something that would be a great benefit for us to, to be able to actually go through as a school committee, the different types of goals, how that when you, you know, set, they have a sort of a term of art, the SMART goal, which has to be specific and measurable and actionable and reasonable, and they have a whole lot of, a lot of, and a big acronym, a big acronym for that. But broadly speaking, the importance of setting goals for the district and setting goals also as a committee, which I think is sort of helpful and distinct. We have Dr. Brand's goals that we've already approved, but also thinking in terms of just what are the goals and priorities for the Wilmington District, what are our goals as a school committee in terms of whether it's professional development or what we hope to accomplish as individual members, and then the ways that setting goals helps to frame other parts of the work that we do. So, when you have clear, measurable goals that you're looking at, then that talks, that helps affect what we do in the meetings, that affects what happens on our agendas, it affects what we do in the budget. If we have goals for the year, then the budget has to be made to support those goals. You have to devote the resources to be behind those goals. And so, I thought that that was a very valuable session, and I hope that we are able to do that, the rest of that workshop with her when we have the opportunity.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns, any other workshops that stuck out for you in particular?
Well, I think a lot of it focused on the social emotional wellness, so a lot of the workshops, workshops were driven by that, and I did take a fostering mindfulness and education to support social emotional learning discussion, which was very helpful with how encompassing that if we want to see this within our schools, it has to start from the top up, meaning within our community and within our administrators and staff, but the tools as to how do we start that process so that it sort of trickles down to our students and our students benefit from it. A lot of little tools that I hope to, that Dr. Brand allows, to share with a wellness advisory council, Dorine Crowe, as well as Ms. Laura Stinson, to see how we might better implement this within our staffing and also within our classrooms during the school day, with hopes that maybe it might mitigate some of our cultural targets that we're hoping to see within our schools. Also, as I said before, I think I hit the nail on the head with choosing my workshops, call it fate, the discussion with regards to strategies to support students in uncertain times and responding to student threats of violence through collaboration. Again, this was where the Cambridge School System collaborated with their police department and Cambridge Health Alliance to create a Cambridge Safety Net, with hopes to redirecting kids who have infractions away from the juvenile system and try to get them the mental health supports that usually drive these type of behaviors. It was so much information, and I think as we ourselves, you know, collaborate with our police department, it's always good to have a resource to kind of partner up with, why create the wheel when, you know, you can collaborate with other school districts and police departments. I thought that was huge. But I also took, I wanted to get ahead of the game and took a workshop with Mr., his last name is Curtin, Rob Curtin?
Rob Curtin.
Thank you, on the accountability tool. I find that a lot of the workshops that I did take, this being one of which, really required a double session, double session, there was, we didn't get through the whole workshop, and people were really energized by that discussion. But at least I've, I got a, you know, familiar foundation to start this discussion tonight, which was helpful, but I will be looking for you for more directives this time next year, as FYI. I also sat in on the Department of Ed updates as to what's coming down the pipeline, what's transpired, some of the discussion besides the accountability tool and what that looks like and the whys behind it. They touched upon blizzard bags, which, as you know, that, I know I've had some parents reach out over, usually this time of the year when we see the change in the weather, and how Department of Ed is doing a case by case with school districts and using blizzard bags to count as school days when we have extended days out of school. That's something that I think we'd like to explore further on as we, this time, you know, at some point. We, Division One and Division Two met, I figure I'd include this in our update. Beverly Griffin Dunn, who is on the PBD School Committee, as well as sits as the appointee to, I never get it right, I only know it by, Dave, maybe you can help me, I only know it as the Essex Aggie, but it's no longer called it.
Essex North Shore.
North Shore Technical School. She sits as our Division One President. I've been appointed to sit as the vice chair to support her. And Darlene Torre, who is the Bill Ricker School Committee Member, is the Secretary Treasurer. They, if you don't know about the divisions, we sit with one of 30 school committees in our division, it's all of Essex County and partly of Middlesex County. They'll host workshops such as Charting the Course and other workshops through that MASC has for the divisions. I think a lot of it is collaborating with Division Two, which encompasses Medford and the other part of Middlesex County. So, looking forward to supporting, to supporting that and driving workshops as best as I can, so. Does anybody?
The last thing that we should not fail to mention is that we were there at the Thursday night dinner when the lifetime school committee achievement awards were given out, and even though Peggy couldn't be there to receive it in person, you know, she was written up nicely in the brochure, and they read it, you know, her accomplishments and the reasons that she was nominated and selected for the award, and MJ selected the, received it on her behalf, and it would have been, would have been better if she had been there to receive it in person, but we'll, we'll work, we'll do something nice at one of our meetings, but we were glad to be there to honor her.
Great, thank you. Just for the, for the committee, I have reached out to Mrs. Kane, she is tentatively available the 12th, which will be our next meeting, and I thought that might work as Dorothy Presser from MASC will already be here anyway, as part of our agenda. So, we'll, fingers crossed that that date continues to work, but that is on the radar. Okay. Anything else on the conference that you wanted to share? Okay, public comment? I think we lost some of our guests.
Can I have a minute to go through the resolutions again?
Yes, definitely. But I'm going to leave. It's getting late. Okay, subcommittee reports. Anybody on, Mrs. Burns?
If there's no other subcommittees beforehand, I would like to ask the chair if I could make just a personal announcement.
Sure, go ahead.
While at conference, I have, I'm very humbled, but very proud. I, Senator Tar reached out to me and has appointed me to the Early Education and Care Workforce Council at the state level, which I'm grateful for, and still a little wowed in learning more about what that council does, and I just thought I'd share that with the committee. It shouldn't, it doesn't impact my roles or responsibilities here on the board, but just a little insight, and keep it short, because it is late, the, from what I've learned, and I'm still reading up more to this council, it falls under the Department of Early Education, and it drives, it supports educators and professionals who work with children, daycares, both public and privately, in higher education, professional development, grant and scholarship to ensure that our educators are the highest qualified to teach our students, as well as, it's the only workforce in the United States, from what I understand, and as I learn more about this council and my role on it, you know, I'm very much looking forward to the newest challenge, so, thank you.
Any other subcommittee reports? No, I was just going to point out, I had attempted to get a date for the Family and School Committee Relations or Communications Subcommittee to meet, that's myself, Mr. Talbot, and Mrs. Bryson. I think the dates that I selected didn't work for anyone, so if you two could just kind of look at your calendars and maybe come to me.
Did I have a response?
I emailed. No, I didn't get any responses, so I figured, okay, they must not work.
I didn't get it, I didn't see that email.
You didn't get your email, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe if you could just check your calendar and let me know either dates that you definitely can't do, or times a day that you definitely can't do, whichever is easiest, but let's try to get something on the calendar for this.
True.
Okay. Great. Any other subcommittee? No? Any other correspondents? No, seeing none? Okay, future meeting dates. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 12th, that's our one and only meeting in December. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I've been made aware that there is another town board that will be meeting the same evening, that may have a topic of interest to lots of people. I am not inclined to cancel or reschedule our meeting, but I do need to ensure that we have a quorum. So, is there anyone who knows now that they can't do December 12th? Okay. Seeing no. Great, then we will keep it, keep it as is, and then our first meeting in January is the 9th. Okay, and with that, I think we've reached the end of our agenda, not too bad, almost 9:30. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Mrs. Burns, thank you, seconded. Got multiple people. Say, Mrs. Bryson, all those in favor? That looks like that's unanimous. Thank you very much, all.